It is seven oh three P M and I will call the zoning board of appeals. Need to order on Wednesday, November fifteenth. I'm Sarah Melish, the chair have with me Rob Scott, Catherine Howe, John Donaris, Jim Dietrich and Brian Solis and Sue Filbrick is sitting in the planning board. Um, Brian will be recusing himself in the first application. So the five of us others will be voting. Just to um. As a start for this meeting, um. In case anybody is here for the application of Joseph Balzone. Um regarding Harbor Street seventy-three seventy-five Harbor Street. I wanted to announce that we will not be hearing that application tonight. Um, because it was mistakenly posted for seventy-three Harbor Street rather than seventy-five. Um, so we will be reposting that for our December meeting with the correct address and. Sending um a better notices again. Thanks. So the first application tonight is the application for Old Quarry LLC. AKA cell signaling technology. I will open the public hearing for the application of Old Quarry LLC. For a variance under sections five point five and twelve point three point three of the zoning bylaw. And or other relief is maybe necessary to allow an eight foot increase in the height. For the building from fifty-five feet to sixty-three feet. A four foot increase in the height for mechanical appurtenances from fifteen feet to nineteen feet. And and an eleven foot increase in the height of the best height from fifteen feet to twenty-six feet. At the site located off old at Water Avenue assessors map. Thirty-seven lots, seven and eight in the limited commercial district filed with the town clerk on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Am I correct? There's two lots?
Yes.
Okay, good. It wasn't on the application, so we had to look it up.
All right, there's a lot that is contained within the large lot.
Okay.
And it has merged, but the assessors are still carrying it.
So who will be presenting this application?
I will be one of the presenters.
Okay.
My name is Mark Kloski. I'm a lawyer with offices at eight Washington Street in Beverly. And as you heard, I'm here tonight representing the applicant Old Quarry LLC. Uh, the end user, as you all know, will be self signaling technology, hopefully. Most of you, all of you, most of you attended the site visit on Saturday, and so you're familiar with the property. Uh, it's forty acres, uh, founded by one twenty-eight uh. In these property and property trustees of reservations. It's a site that has had a history as a stone quarry for decades. It was. I doubt uh, the property is now. The remnants of the old quarry. Uh, it is about twenty-five hundred feet deep from Atwater Avenue to the trustees property on the north. It has a change of elevation from one forty-six to fifty at Atwater Avenue. So there's a ninety-six foot drop from the highest portion of property, the lowest portion. Uh, at the site that you saw, which is the proposed site of the building. Uh, the cliff uh remains, which is the highest point. Uh, it is going to be contained within the building's footprint, hopefully. Uh, and that is at an elevation of one twenty-two, it drops to forty-four, so it drops to seventy-eight. So there's a forty foot change in elevation from the top of that cliff that you saw on Saturday to the base. That is the location of the proposed building and it's the location of the proposed building for several reasons. Uh, one, uh, early on in our discussions with the planning board, uh, we were. Uh, informed essentially that the town would prefer to see less of the building from one twenty-eight. Uh, we were also encouraged to develop the disturbed portions of the property. And try to leave unscathed the uh undisturbed portions of the property and in fact enhance them. Uh, so that is precisely what self signaling is proposing to do. And that is, uh, in fact, uh, the reason why we're here tonight. Because in order to accomplish uh that, we need to uh. Set the building in a location which, as you'll hear, because of the height definition in the zoning bylaw. Uh, will necessitate the variances that we're requesting. Notwithstanding the fact that looking at the prop at the proposed building from one twenty-eight, you'll essentially be a two-story building. Uh, but on the rear carved out portion of the property facing Tim Brady, uh, there will be multiple stories. So uh, that section of the building won't be exposed to to uh anything other than the Brady property essentially. And uh. It's it is uh extremely challenging site and Samir Sroji, who's uh here tonight from HGA with Mark Allen. Uh, will explain uh how they have designed a building that uh. That does a terrific job in providing uh with self signaling needs. And at the same time responding to the issues that were raised by the planning board. But before we get to the description of the building and the precise reasons why the variances are needed for building height. Uh, I I thought it would be appropriate for Matt Connors from Hancock Associates. To explain the situation with respect to the topography in better terms than I could.
Got to look at.
Oh, good.
I believe you all have this. I've just flown it up. Stand right here, so. Get everybody. So when you look at the property. We have uh this dense run through here of of lines basically of the clip things. So up here, this is.
Can you just move it around slightly so that um, yeah, so this is better.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
No problem. Um, so so outlined in. The line in blue is the building over. Uh, one twenty-eight is down here at the bottom by the hand and the storage facility is up in this area. Um, what's outlined in blue is phase one, phase two, and this is our parking garage. Um, so as you look at where the footprint is, we have a low spot. On based upon existing topography of uh seventy-three and change over here in the phase two. And the highest spot based on the building and topography is over here at one twenty-four. So as you go from the lower side up to clip base to the high side, quite a bit of change. Over here at the parking garage, it's not so much of a change because we're in that mostly in the lower area, but we have a low over here of eighty-two. And our highs somewhere around here like eighty-six. Or it's uh eighty-eight, sorry, from here. Um, so you see the the powerful changes that we're dealing with as we cite this building. Uh, to get a better. Understanding, we took a section through phase one. And to show you how basically here's the start of phase one over here. Come across, we have a clip base that we're coming up and then come over here and this is about the end of these two. Uh, sorry, phase one. So up here, as Mark was saying, we have two stories and down here. Where we're hiding a lot of elevation, we have the multiple stories. Any questions on our.
Matt's not going anywhere, so i- if we need to get back to topography and do that.
Absolutely.
Um, also here, uh, by the way, from uh cell signaling are Peter Rudolph and Craig Thompson. As well as Peter Cordell and uh. Uh, if there are any questions that are related to cell signaling in particular, uh, they're the ones that should be able to respond, hopefully. But with that, I think Samir is now going to explain how we design the building.
And if I may get our mission to share, maybe I can uh share the images so that everyone. So this is the same uh package that you have in your hands.
Do you have another print?
Oh, yes.
I thought there was a major change. Never mind. Sorry. I know. Okay, so it's up. People come turn their chairs around. We won't be offended. And could you just state your name again?
Uh, my name is Samir. I'm principal for the project. Alright, so this is the image and aerial image of the site. So with the, I mentioned, I got a plot on the right. Uh, the storage facility that Brady property that we call it. In the middle, the clip that we talk about that remains from the quarry activity on the side. Um, from the beginning, we opted to straddle this thick cliff. Because uh, the area within uh the center of the property is the disturbed area. I disturb through the quarrying activity. We're developing only eight acres of the forty-eight acre, so the rest of it is really forest. And uh self signaling is uh charged for us is to really restore the old quarry on the start side. Um, and we're doing that. Uh, by uh placing the buildings in the worst disturbed areas of the site, and that's where the cliff is. The cliff creates two levels uh for the campus, so self signaling will be moving their whole campus and by. Um, to to achieve the goal of uh connecting the floor level and the upper level. The building is traveling the cliff and creating kind of a cascading effect along it. Use the plan that shows the footprint. So we're talking about phase one. Uh, both building and garage and then phase two. Land in creating a sort of a V shape, both of them straddling the grid right here. And um, one of the other main charges that um. CSD and the town gave us is uh to minimize visual impact from one twenty-eight, so. Uh, that's um always been a driver. And by sitting low in the site, we actually achieved that. So the garage in the initial master plan was going to be a paved uh surface parking. CSD decided to invest in a uh structured garage to minimize the amount of paved uh surfaces. And uh connect the garage to the building directly. The decision to place the garage right where it is. Uh, on the east side of the building was because it is as uh. Matt described is the lowest point of the site. By doing that, we're keeping it away from uh. Uh, you know, minimizing its visibility from one twenty-eight and from the campus. When we did all of that to kind of stay low and uh minimize the impact. Um. A bulk of the building perimeter, here's a rendering of phase one alone, straddling the cliff. When we calculate the average grade that is defined by the perimeter of both the building and the garage, both phases. Uh, we're kind of penalized because we're trying to achieve kind of low visual impact by having. By being a lot of the perimeter of the building low in the side, the average grade is actually uh low. This is a bit uh visual with phase two coming in with the same concept of straddling up against the cliff. This is closer view of that. Closer view with the building phase two in place and you see the garage and the on the far left. So the calculation of the average grade per the bylaws, uh, put it at elevation ninety-seven, ten-six. And because this is a lab building and lab building benefits from having uh robust floor floor height. We're at around fifteen floor floors. Um, um, measuring to the top of the building, um, actually exceeded the bylaw. And the zoning allowance of fifty-five, and that's why we're here asking for relief on that. Here's a view uh an aerial view of the approach, which would be the south side. This is the area that we're calling the upper meadow. And you can see the bridge that connects to the garage on the right. That's the main entrance of the building. We see the mechanical space up on top. Uh, and in this view, we were showing the stacks, uh, the vent, the vents uh for mechanical. Venting of the building. Uh, since then, the design has shifted. We tried to minimize the visual effect of those and we captured them and I can mark. Information on that.
Yeah, so the new plans, right?
Yeah. Um, so this is sort of an elevation that indicates the average grade height. And the requested uh building height that allows us to have. The two floors on the upper meadow as stated with fifteen floor floor. Uh, and then um the mechanical space height at nineteen instead of fifteen. And uh in addition to that, seven feet for. With an elevation that crosses slices through the front of the building. Entrance being right here, uh, and the link to the garage and the garage. And as you can see, the garage is sitting in the lowest point of the size intentionally. Any questions? Yeah.
I mean, I'm confused by the item then pipes. Yeah, originally it said additional eleven feet. Now it's only seven. Is that?
No.
No.
Uh, it's still eleven. Uh, the uh mechanicals are limited by the bylaw to fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Uh, the vent pipes are going to be uh eleven, twenty-six feet above the the roof, the highest point of the roof. So they will be, if the if the mechanical could be fifteen before, we're now going to exceed that fifteen by eleven with the vent pipes. And we're going to exceed that fifteen by four feet with the mechanicals. And I think Samir is going to explain that, right?
Yes. Question.
Yeah, two questions.
Yeah.
Earlier, a number of people have said that the planning board. Uh, asked you to minimize uh what would be seen from one twenty-eight. Uh, I haven't seen any. Uh, pictures of that yet. You may have one, and if you do, I'd like to see it at some point. Second question is, um, is there a um standard that determines the height of vent pipes coming out of laboratories? And what is it based on and who establishes that that sort of thing? Okay, good. Thank you. We anticipated that. I'm glad you did.
Yeah, so um. But here's a view, sorry. So this is actually a view of one twenty-eight. Um. Right here is uh you're kind of standing at the highway by level. At one twenty-eight, looking towards the side and you can see the kind of position in the upper corner here. I'll move this, see if that helps. Um, so basically, um, there is a height elevation between twenty-one twenty-eight and this upper meadow that we're talking about. And there's a lot of trees. What we did is actually study the trees in winter. Because we wanted to know how many are evergreens, how many shed uh uh their leaves, so that there's no visibility whatsoever. The image on the left right here. It shows a little bit of the building peeking through that canopy. If we put all the building on the higher elevation. So this is just to say that the option of putting more of the building on the lower levels. Uh, is to really eliminate that uh view. The second question, is that a good?
So what you're saying is we should be looking at the photograph on the right.
What the design is right now.
Thank you.
Including the variants required, uh, request. Um, now on the um vent height. We actually go through a process of modeling, physical model that is put in a wind tunnel. To study what is the optimal height of vents. And uh you want to be, there's a couple of things you're trying to achieve. You're trying to uh. Uh, make it safe for people that go up on the roof of the mechanical space, for example, to clean the PV array or something. And you want that stack to extend beyond the height of a person there so that the. You know, the air goes higher than that. And again, because CSD's goal is very um ambitious on the sustainability piece of things and energy consumption. Uh, the height of the stack is also uh beneficial in lowering the fan speed that pushes. So by by having at requesting that height, we're kind of lowering the energy consumption. The greenhouse gas impact of the building on the environment.
Chimney effect. Thank you. Sorry, you're an engineer? Yeah. I'm an engineer. Engineer does a lot of questions. Oh, that's actually important because I spent my whole life in chemical plants and they're all over the place.
That explains everything.
And um, I was always curious if there was. Other than the chimney effect, if there was a standard, and I appreciate your answer. Thank you very much.
I mean, and the thing is, you're balancing all of these safety and energy with the visibility. Like we're wanting to be the lowest possible, but without it impacting safety and. The supplemental information. So here's a view of um. An updated image of the southern uh beauty with the vents moving. Uh, to an area where you don't see it from anywhere around the campus. But also meeting that requirement that I just mentioned. Um, this is the plan of the mechanical space. And um, this relates to the request going from fifteen to nineteen in terms of the. Uh, pipe for the mechanical space. A section through the mechanical space, which is up here, shows that we're um trying to fit with. Uh, within the. Nineteen feet required and the what drives that need for the height is similarly uh sustainability manager. With the air handling units using what's called uh uh heat recovery wheel. So they actually uh, and I chose visual of that if someone is interested. Oh, by the way, and Ma- Mark asked me to put kind of examples of what those vents might look like. So here's uh events um. At MIT and another event in St. Stephen, another building on Boston. So it is this kind of type of simple cylinder. I don't know. So it's not, doesn't have that industrial. So within the mechanical space, you'll see here on the right-hand side. The two-story air handling unit that was right and uh with all the pipes that um are required for services. And what drives the height of these units is what this wheel that is called an entropy wheel. And basically what that does is takes heated and cooled air. Instead of pushing it outside building as an exhaust. It takes that heat and the energy spent already and moves it to the new air that goes back into. This is a process of taking that energy and putting it back into the building, and that's where the height. Uh, uh, comes from. Similarly, on the the venting, what you see here is fans that are taking the air out through the vents. Um, what you see on the left is air-cooled chillers, which are elements that would be uh sitting on the roof. Within the allowable height, but basically they are. They sit out here behind the screen. And. Back to the view in the building. From the building, we're screening those behind this feature right here. So the idea is that you also don't see those in there. So that's our presentation with the reasons.
If I may, at this point summarize and conclude. Obviously, uh, in order to uh be entitled to the relief that we're requesting, we need to meet the statutory requirements. Uh, in this case, uh, I think it's been pretty well explained that we're dealing with some unusual topographic conditions. That are unique to this property and don't affect all properties in the uh limited commercial district. And uh, it's on account of those topographic conditions that we're here tonight. Uh, what we're asking for, uh, we believe is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. In many respects, uh, it's encouraging the most appropriate use of a. Uh, property that's had a checkered past. Uh, it's maintaining to the extent we can and enhancing natural amenities. Uh, conserving the value of of land in the town of Manchester. Uh, promoting the sustainable development and encouraging climate resistance. Uh, those are key to our project. And uh, lastly, uh, implementing recommendations of the master plan. And the master plan, as I suspect you all know, uh, more than anything else, encouraged. Uh, proper development in the limited commercial district in order to improve the fiscal condition of the town. Uh, there's been some public published stories lately about what the town is anticipating from this project. Uh, we can't predict. We can say that uh, we're not going to be asking for tax incentive financing. Uh, we do intend to pay a fair share for taxes. Uh, until we actually finish the design of the building and and get uh estimates as to what it's going to cost. Uh, we really can't tell you precisely what the benefit to the town will be. But there certainly will be a significant fiscal benefit uh with very little downside. Uh, the planning board is part of its process will require a fiscal fiscal impact study. And probably peer review of that fiscal impact study. So a a lot in addition to the limited materials that we're presenting tonight with respect to building height. Will be provided to the planning board in order for us to uh. Encourage the planning board to grant us the special permit that we require from the planning board as well as site plan review. Uh, so uh with that, the team is here to answer any questions you have and uh. We look forward to moving this project along.
So I'll see first if there's questions from the board and I just want to remind both people on the board and people in the audience. That what's before us is a variance with respect to the height. So we won't be taking questions that go outside of that um with respect to the. Because that will be in the purview of the planning. Brian, do you have any questions with respect to the height?
Well, that limitation, no, I don't. Yeah, I have no doubt.
Rob. Yeah.
No, I think it's a good design.
With that, is there any member of the public who wishes to be um recognized on this application? Is there anybody in the room? Rob, please state your name and address.
Ron Master Giacomo, nine Mascanamo Street. Just wondering if all the mechanicals have to go on the roof or can they really put on the ground like the chiller and. Just wondering if all the mechanicals have to go on the roof, or can they really put on the ground like the chiller and what have you, or do they, where they engineering-wise need to be on the roof?
Um, so there are mechanical uh equipment that sits inside the building on the lower level, and they need to be there because that's where uh utilities feed in, but typically you want to take, put the air handling units up because it wants to get fresh air and uh take it down into the building, so that the logical placement of it is uh really on the path.
And it was efficient energy-wise.
Then a follow-up question?
Yes.
On the higher up building on the one that's straddling the ledge, would there be any lighting at the, on that side of the building that faces the highway, um wall pack lighting at that height or uh um where the uh light pollution?
Uh, so there will be uh lights along the road, which we call the loop road, and of course, there'll be light inside the building. But we are uh doing a photometric study that is to meet the town uh bylaws for and meet the requirements for uh no light pollution. Uh, and we're uh that would be part of our submission for the special permit.
Can I answer your questions? Anybody else in the room? Um, with that, I will go to people on Zoom. Um, if you have a question, please raise your hand on Zoom so you can be followed on. I don't see anybody raising their hands. With that, does the board want to discuss the application?
I just have one question. Sure. Um, are you guys, I heard you guys mentioned the lead requirement. Are you, are you trying for lead certification on this building?
Yes.
What's your question? I couldn't hear it.
Uh, whether they were trying for lead certification for the building? Because I heard them mention that, and I just wanted to know if that was going to work there.
We're tracking lead gold. And uh we also uh wanted to certify for well, London World Certified, which um close to platinum on that, which is very important.
Thanks, thank you.
And and I I do think that uh the one immediate butter who had interest in the project uh did send a letter to you, Sarah, and others late today.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see it.
So you you may not have seen it, but Tim Brady, who uh owns the property that's developed next door, uh has been working with cell signaling, and as a matter of fact, he's agreed to uh provide some easements that are going to enhance the ability to do planting and and have a secondary means of egress, so uh it's a very good relationship. The the other uh immediate butter, the trustees of reservations, uh we have talked to, they generally don't like to participate in these things. Uh, but as we will explain in the planning board, uh we've designed a hard parking lot and access to the trustees' modelist's property uh so that uh they'll have an enhanced ability to bring people in. And so um we're friendly with our neighbors.
And I'm looking at Mr. Brady's letter now that um seems to whole wholeheartedly support it and talk about it will be an incredibly valuable asset for our town, and it's beautiful. Uh, okay. Any concerns? From the board regarding that?
I'm going to ask one because uh I have no idea what cell signaling technology is engaged in. I have a very broad sense, but I don't know. But the question that comes up, particularly when you talk about vent pipes and all, will you be doing anything in there in your building, in your laboratories? That if it got out of the building, it would present a hazard to the people of Manchester and the surrounding areas?
Generally, no, we we're not working with any type of biological reagents that, you know, would pose any significant, you know, any really any harm at all. We're not working with infectious disease agents that could get out and spread diseases.
So there's no level, level four labs in there?
We are, we are BL two uh level facility.
Thank you.
Uh, I I thought that the uh the site visit on Saturday was really helpful, just to have an understanding of the existing conditions and how your design ties into that, so that was really helpful. Um, a- and with respect to phase two, I think we touched on this at the meeting, um is that construction phase dependent on the the growth of the company, or is it the capital markets or a combination of both?
I I would say it certainly a combination, uh you know, primarily assuming the capital markets are, you know, sufficiently in order, it would primarily depend on the
Sorry, thank you.
No way, I think, I think this is a a nice design, and they did a good job with the challenging site. No, I don't have any questions on the height at this time.
No questions. Nothing, nothing that concerns the height. And and I was clearly told not to ask anything, though.
You're not on my time, you can talk to anyone.
So uh, I mean, it's a mixed mixed-use occupancy. And we mentioned earlier that it might be an area that's a high hazardous use group. Is that correct?
Mark, can you talk?
Yeah, sure. Uh, so it's a
Did you just state your name?
Yes, sure, Mark Allen, I'm the principal of the HGA. Uh, so it's technically a B building occupancy, with mixed uh occupancies within it. So that the each uses would be less than ten percent of that, or if you're general. You know, not especially large amounts of uh solids.
So it's just pure the solvents or explosives?
Uh, no explosives.
So again, I mean, we're all concerned that, you know, something could escape, or there was to be a fire or explosion, we ought just like to know that.
Right, and those rooms are, those rooms are designed to be contained, so they have two-hour fire ratings, other provisions. And again, they're relatively small, um, or especially for buildings.
Will you make motion?
Yes.
Stay awake. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of old forty LLC where a variance under sections five point five and twelve point three point three of the zoning bylaw and other relief is maybe necessary to allow for an eight-foot increase in the height of the building from fifty-five feet to sixty-three feet. A four-foot increase in the height for mechanical appurtenances from fifteen feet to nineteen feet. And an eleven-foot increase in the height of the vent pipes from fifteen feet to twenty feet. At the site located off Atwater Avenue, Assessors Map Number Thirty-Six, Lot Seven and Eight, in the Limited Commercial District. Uh, with the town clerk on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Based on a finding, the building will be primarily used for laboratory purposes and health, safety, environmental, and sustainability require a design with a higher with the higher requested heights. A single structure will be built in two phases. There is a seventy-eight foot drop in the elevation where the structure is to be built, since the site was previously disturbed disturbed by a granite quarry which operated on the site. And the desire to protect the undisturbed portion of the property owing to the circumstances relating to the topography of this land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant. And the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Based on the condition, the project is constructed substantially in accordance with the location and height depicted on the following documents. These are the documents I was gonna um propose to include. Plans prepared by Hancock Associates, the ZBA exhibit plan of land dated October sixteenth, twenty-three, the working plan of land dated September twenty-seventh, twenty-three, the ZBA grading exhibit plan dated October eleventh of twenty-three, and the average existing grade database dated October eleventh. Um, and then also depictions prepared by HGA dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, consisting of thirteen pages, including drone views proposed massing site section, average pre-construction grade. And then for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, to the extent it differs from the one from the October. And then finally, this height variance is granted for the construction of a parking garage, laboratory, and office space in one multi-level structure to be built in two phases. The rights granted under this variance shall last on the first anniversary of the date stamped by the town clerk on the first page of the decision, the date on which it is granted, plus time required to pursue or await an appeal of this decision unless the applicant has applied for a building permit or the site work for this proposed project is commenced.
Uh, we uh yeah, the the statute doesn't require uh that action on the variance necessitate the issuance of a building permit or even construction activity. However, uh we need to do things in reliance on the relief you grant tonight, which we intend to do, going to the planning board, uh other work. But I do anticipate that we'll be doing site work within a year of the grant, so I think that your language is sufficient.
And and it's my understanding that you also have the right to come back to us and request a six-month extension if you do it before that initial year.
That's correct.
I wanted to give you time for the granting of the planning board special permit.
As long as the planning board acts quickly, we'll be fine.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Jim, seconded. I can write it. Who would like to review it?
I'll review it.
Jim will review it, okay. And we'll try to be timely on oh, sorry. Any more discussion? Take a vote. Jim?
Yes.
Rob? Catherine?
Agreed.
John?
Yes.
Sarah? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
I thought it was something in mind, you know, it's kind of
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay.
Oh, I was gonna name a dog. That's right. Uh, no, it's uh Yeah, I mean, it's always, I mean, we I think whatever that you're gathering, we Oh, I mean, Brian is still probably and it was probably So I was just kind of going through the You got somebody? Find that guy. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Didn't you uh didn't you have a lot of issues?
That aren't really consequences.
Okay.
I'm speaking as a citizen, not a member of
We're now going to move on to the application for Three Herald Street. Um, I will open the public hearing for the application, Heather and James Campbell for a special permit under sections five point four, seven point two, and twelve point five in the zoning bylaw, and the other relief is maybe necessary at a second-floor addition over the garage and over the single-story portion in the front right, a three-foot by fourteen-foot front addition and a four-foot by fourteen-foot front entry porch on a non-conforming residential structure on a non-conforming lot at Three Herald Street, Assessors Map Number Thirty-Nine, Lot Number Two, and District A, uh with the town clerk on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Why would somebody be here to present the application? Please state your name.
James Campbell.
Okay.
You know, this is my first time here, so I apologize if I
No problem, I have a slick presentation.
Well, I don't have, we're not quite as I'm through with you here.
Where, where's your massive bed?
My army right there. If there's any real questions, you can So, a- as you mentioned, we're currently in a about a twenty-four hundred uh plus square foot um single-family home. Um, where parts of it are non-conforming, so um there's currently a uh walkways, you know, um that goes across in front of the house with an off-center doorway um to the right of the house as you're facing the um the structure. And there was a trowel over that, um which we removed, that was um kind of already existing and too close to the um the street that run it, I think by a, by a And then, so what we are uh proposing is just, we want to re-center the door on the house, uh remove that walkway, um and then bring out a covered porch that would um that would cover the walkway, and then with some, you know, footings or foundation under that, and then uh uh a walkway up to the house, so um we removed a lot of the current um pavers that are there, so it should improve the um the inverters area um within the front of the house. That's the one item, and then due to the way the lot lines um on the left side of the house as you're facing the house, um going a little bit of an angle, the back corner of the existing garage is about four feet um within the setback. Um, and so that's really the the other shoe we're looking for, so that we can um put the addition over much needed space for storage and
Did you talk to your neighbor?
We did. Um, so none of the neighbors um had any issues, the uh John and uh Mary Jo, who were on the Five Herald Street. Um, they did bring up a concern about windows and where their house is located, and we're worried about the windows might be a little close. Um so we had proposed a few options to them. We had already planned our provides, which we think will grow up and provide some coverage on that side anyway. We offered to put in a tree to provide some some additional um uh privacy, and you know, also, if, you know, if neither of those were were satisfied, we offered to um potentially um go from the double-bung windows that are on the side to something that's higher and more decorative, just so we can take it out of line of sight, but also still get some light in on that side of the house. Because right now, there's no windows over there. Wow, so that is the one lone um concern I have to have them articulate at the moment at all. If not, if they have any concern with the university options.
These are the windows above the garage?
Yes, on the, on the side.
Far end of the garage, there's two double-bung windows.
So that's the left side elevation?
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, our neighbors have um verbalized about that, so there's a part of them.
I know that for the board, we've received several versions. Of the plans in the C on October nineteen.
One thousand.
Yeah, I got you downstairs.
Yeah, they have to relate you. There should be, they're set, they're stamped, we see by the town clerk October nineteen.
September twenty seven.
What?
Yeah.
And then there should be some mark for the next. Minor thing.
Wow, can I see that?
Yeah. Here it is.
Oh. You know, we you know, we change between us doing a potentially increasing of the fight of the main. Then the house because it's sun there.
Right.
I got it. Fairly low pitch countries, there's no space in the attitude. We're going to increase the.
Um, so.
But no, no change of.
Otherwise. Only the.
It's just like slightly different.
Can't really tell it from the plan.
Yeah.
You don't see, but so you had originally requested. Said that would be a twenty-three foot foot, really, what are you saying it can be now?
Uh, it's about twenty-five and a half.
Okay.
Catherine, you need this?
He does.
No, I can.
Okay. Look at mine.
I'm not holding.
Oh, great, yes, all right, I'm yours.
Wracking up the fingers.
You going to please? Oh, I'm ready, more qualifications.
Are there any questions?
No questions.
Good design.
Yeah.
So it looks like that that. Front corner of the garage is the the part that's going into the side setback and the front setback, right?
The front is um, treated in a front zone, was a little over twenty feet. Uh, it's the back rear corner, that's the that's.
There's fifteen point seven six.
Yeah.
This one, that's.
I saw that.
The rear setback is a hundred. But then.
Rear setbacks, okay.
Yeah, oh.
Sorry, the front corner to the street, yes.
Yeah, so that that front corner to the street and sorry, that that rear corner to the side, yes. Yeah, and that's with the the existing footprint, so it's been there.
For the garage, we're going directly over what's already existing.
Yeah.
The only place that we're extending the footprint is um, where the new front door will be, will be extending that out um. Three feet to build out like a little angle, and then there will be another about three and a half feet of a covered porch.
Sure.
So. And that would put us about uh, twenty, like twenty-eight feet, a little over twenty-eight feet from the street.
And what is it now?
Uh, well, technically, we took down that trellis that was up and that was twenty-one feet from the street. There was a very large.
Okay.
Trellis that was removed and I don't know if it was a, or not, to give you the reviews, but that we totally removed, so what we're actually putting in is going to be. Uh, it's getting smaller.
For the.
Yeah, but it doesn't enhance the non-conformity.
So. Your front setback. You're still going to be within the requirements in the front setback.
No.
No?
They were, the front.
I'm just looking at this.
The front setback is thirty feet.
Yep, and it says twenty-seven and twenty-seven on this cover sheet that I have.
Yeah.
So, there's.
Right, so they miss it by three feet.
Right. We're not making it worse.
The plans are saying, the plans are saying twenty-eight.
On the front entryway, yeah.
Twenty-eight point three.
And the front uh, portion of the house that's currently there.
There are the lock, large, like, walkway, and then there was a trellis over that that came out. You know, small bump out on the entryway and then the the covering.
Yeah.
I'm not going to extend as far as that trellis.
Or the front of that existing uh, entity that we already have. Which is twenty-eight, a little twenty-eight.
Though it's not going to be. A little.
I'm nothing further, this is straightforward.
Yeah. Jim?
I'm okay.
Anybody in the room that wants to ask a question? Do you have anything, Ben?
Nothing, that's not, I got plenty of things, but not really this.
Um, is there? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to be heard on this application, and so please raise your hand in Zoom and I'll call on you. I don't see anybody. So are you ready to make a motion?
We're excited for you to make a motion.
You're on fire tonight, huh?
Is that burning, Charles?
I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Heather and James Campbell for a special permit under sections five point four. Seven point two and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw. And other relief is maybe necessary to add a second story over the existing attached garage. And the single-story portion in the front right. A single-story, three-foot by fourteen-foot front addition. And four-foot by fourteen-foot front entry porch. On the existing non-conforming residential structure on a non-conforming lot. At Three Herald Street, assessors map number thirty-nine. Lot number two in District A, bow with the town clerk on September twenty-seven twenty twenty-three. Based on a finding that the proposed project add a second story over the existing attached garage. Add a three-foot by fourteen-foot front entry. And four by fourteen foot. On porch, to an existing non-conforming residential structure, which encroaches. Into the front setback and left side setback. On a non-conforming lot is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing non-conforming structure. And the requirements and conditions of section twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw. For the grant of a special permit have been met, based on the following conditions. The house and additions are constructed as reflected on the plan of land prepared by Merrimack Engineering Services. Dated June twenty-sixth. Nineteen twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um. The house renovations and additions are constructed substantially in accordance with the following plans. Prepared by J and A Architects and Planners. Dated October seventeen twenty twenty-three. Submitted to the town clerk on October nineteen twenty twenty-three. A one, existing and proposed first floor plan, A two, existing and proposed second floor plan. A three, existing and proposed front elevation. A four, existing and proposed rear elevation. A five, existing and proposed side elevations. A six, attic floor plan and building sections. And do you want me to add something about? Discussions with the neighbor? Okay, no, okay. Um, do I have a second? Catherine, seconds. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Jim?
Yes, I approve.
Rob?
Approved.
Catherine? Approved. John?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Who would like to write this?
I can write it.
John will write it. You would like to approve it? I can review it.
Can I get a copy of the? The additions that were stamped in October?
Yeah.
I just take.
Okay.
Oh, by the way, she got the minute.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, now he owes you.
He's collecting a lot of work.
So, you're all set.
Thank you.
We, we have ninety days to write the decision. Um, once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a twenty-day appeal period. The building inspector will issue a building permit and allow you to to proceed at your own risk prior to the expiration of that twenty day. And Gail Hunter will send you a copy of the decision when it's filed. Hopefully, it'll be shorter than ninety days.
Yeah, cool. Thank you so much, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And no, did you? What? About your. What are you sort of my? Okay. We're now moving to the application for one sixty-eight. School Street.
Fine.
Fine, sweet.
Jim, you've just proved your.
Absolutely, I'm paying attention.
That's okay, it's preference.
Well, I have recently.
Is it no nine street ends here?
Oh, I see, okay, just the words are, yeah, I got it.
All right. Can everyone see this, or should I move it to a different spot?
Good.
Okay. I will open the public hearing for the application of David and Seth. For a special permit under sections four, five point four, seven point two, and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw. And your other relief is maybe necessary to raise the existing. Single-family non-conforming structure. And construct a modular non-conforming single-family residence, attach. Attach it to the existing garage. And set it back further on the lot to decrease the encroachment into the front and side setbacks. And eliminate the encroachment into the town of Manchester Waterworks Easement. On a non-conforming lot at one sixty-eight Pine Street. Assessors map number thirty-two, lot number fifty-four in District A, bow with the town clerk on October sixteen twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I'm Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, fifty-three Middle Street, Loster. The applicant is David and Seth, and he's here tonight, and Cynthia Havery is also here, she resides properties. The engineer is Daniel Ottenkhyber of Mill, Mill River Engineering Consulting, excuse me. He is here on Zoom because he had a couple of other meetings. And the builder, Amana Paro, is here. Um, I do have at the. Before the site visit, there was a request that there be um, a height. Sketch, and that was sent out electronically, I don't know if everyone has a copy, but I have five copies if anyone wants to see that.
Yeah, one, sure. I have, I printed it hard.
Thank you, thank you.
Is that what I'm thinking? Mine just printed out finally.
Thank you, oh.
Oh, mine.
I got that, so my computer, yeah.
So, the applicant is requesting a special permit under Manchester zoning bylaw. Section seven point two for the alteration, reconstruction, and expansion of a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. Is there other relief that's requested or required? They are seeking to demolish an existing nine hundred square foot single-family home. And replace it with a fourteen forty square foot single-family home. That will be attached to the existing garage on the property. The car storage tent that is currently on the property will be removed, the two existing sheds will remain. As I said, it's a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. The new house will be placed farther away from the street and more in the middle of the lot. I've added some. Uh, demarcation on the site plan to help you look at this. And this is the front setback. And the new house is entirely outside of the setback. There is still an existing encroachment, which is the garage. So the garage is existing and it encroaches and that will remain. There is no encroachment by the new house. The house also currently. Is in the middle of an easement that is owned by the town for water purposes. And so the new house will be moved entirely outside of that easement. Which is a benefit to both the owner of the property as well as the town to have that easement free and clear of the house. They also have an impediment of wetlands in the backyard, so there are. Very limited space for them to put the house, and they've tried to move it to the middle. And make it um, comply into outside of the wetlands and also outside of the um. Front setback. The property is in the single-residence District A, it requires twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet. This lot has seventeen thousand six hundred eighty-three square feet. The front setback is currently six feet, and it will be increased to twenty-three feet, which is the existing garage. The right side yard setback is currently seven feet, and that will be increased to fourteen feet. Lot coverage will be increased, but it will still be compliant at twenty-nine percent. The rear and the left side yard setbacks are currently compliant and will remain compliant. The proposed height um, is. Calculated to be seventeen feet eleven inches, it's going to be a single-story home, so it's well under the height of um, requirements. The Dave and Cindy have spoken to their neighbors, they've spoken to people who essentially surround the property. One sixty-five Pine Street, one sixty-one Pine Street, one sixty-six, twenty-three Rockwood Heights, which is behind it. And then the town of Manchester also abuts it. They are not aware of any opposition to the project. The special permit to alter, expand, and reconstruct a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot should be granted. Because the new house is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming home. The existing non-conformities are being improved. They are relocating the home outside of the town easement, as I said, which has been official to both the town and the owner. And a significant portion of the wetland um, restricts where the home can be placed. It also complies with the conditions under twelve point five point two, and I'll go through those briefly. With regard to the adequacy of the site in terms of size. The site's undersized, but it is close to the required twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet. It complies with the block coverage requirements. And it already contains a single-family home, and that use will remain. With regard to the suitability for the proposed use, again, the site is already used for a single-family home. The existing utilities will be approved. There is current, the house is currently served by a cesspool. And that will be abandoned, and they will be connecting to the town sewer. There's existing town water, there's adequate access. And it's suitable to contain the proposed new home. The siding will be improved by moving it to the middle of the lot. With regard to traffic flow and safety, that will be improved by moving the house farther away from the street. And only a small portion of the existing garage will encroach into the front yard setback. The impact on the neighborhood as far as visual character and visitor reviews. The impact of the neighborhood will be improved by this um, much newer home than what is there now. The closest home that is avoiding it is to the right, one six six Pine Street. And it will be located farther away from that home. They don't anticipate that there'll be any impacts to visitors or views. And as I said, the new updated home will be beneficial to the neighborhood. The adequacy of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. The cesspool obviously is not ideal, and so this will be a much, much improvement over that. And the drainage will also be served better by being connected to the town sewer. With regard to other utilities, uh, they are all adequate and will be improved. The impact on public and private water supplies, wildlife, and other natural resources. It's located entirely out of the wetlands, they do need to go before conservation. They were waiting until they had a approved footprint before they did that. And again, they'll upgrade the existing cess cesspool. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and as I said, the builder and the engineer are also available to answer questions.
Can you just clarify? For us, the. Size. It's my understanding it's a modular home.
It is a modular home.
There's two sections fourteen feet wide. Yeah. Um.
The body of the house.
Forty-eight on?
Old, we find that we're wrong, but. How many classes?
And this, the reason I'm asking is because.
Forty-eight is what's on the drawing.
The the drawing just says forty-eight, she referenced fourteen hundred and forty square foot feet, and this says sixteen hundred and sixty-eight. Is that difference? The sun will and the death?
Is leashed forward deck. Not sure if that was included or not. I think. If we're including that. If we're including that. Keeping the natural rain from hitting the natural ground, that would be more consistent. But the actual size of the house is forty eight. Boxes are fourteen feet wide, and the sunroom is ten by twelve.
And the porch is.
So it's a wish. Yeah, that's. Either five or six.
I don't have my glasses on, I think it's a six.
It shouldn't be six.
Okay, six by forty. Six by thirty six feet.
The reason I'm asking is when we have plans and if we don't have plans, I want to put the outside limits. Besides, we're moving into the decision. Any questions?
We have a picture of the actual house.
You don't have an actual picture of that house. We were certainly about action for two this board, see if it's going to be approved. Plans and sketch up for you. There's a significant cost to the applicants who really. Were trying to hold off on spending money on plans. Additionally, those plans would have to go up to Indiana for stamping.
With regard to the prefabs, the way it works is they give you, they do have a set of plans, but they showed a second story. So the house isn't going to look like that. They determined as they were going through the design process, they couldn't afford to have a second story. So we don't, in order to get plans. That would show just a single story, it was another thirty five hundred dollars. And then to get stamp plans at seven thousand dollars, which they get back if they go ahead. But obviously not knowing if they're going to get approvals, they were reluctant to spend that extra money.
So when they go to apply for the building permit, that's when they produce it?
Yes, they'll have, they'll have to have more detailed things we have here.
My only other question is, is it going to be changed to the driveway?
I believe.
Drive will stay the same.
I'm sorry, you said that the. Have that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And are you guaranteed a town sewer connection?
There is a connection.
Stopped off on the property line, sorry, ran into the pump station.
Okay, so there's no additional, like that's a guaranteed thing that will happen.
Whether people could apply to get in and all that stuff.
I think it's because they're replacing a cesspool, which I think. That they. Um, John. Is there any member of the public on Zoom who would like to be heard on this application? If so, raise your hand in. Ready for me to make a motion? I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of David M. To set for a special permit under sections. Five point four, seven point two, and twelve point five, the zoning bylaw. And other relief as may be necessary. To raise the existing single family nonconforming structure. And construct a new modular nonconforming single family residence, attach it to the existing garage. And set it back further on the lot to decrease the encroachment into the front and side setbacks. And eliminate the encroachment into the town of Manchester Waterworks easement on a nonconforming lot. At one sixty eight Pine Street, assessors map number thirty two. Lot number fifty four. In District A, filed with the town clerk on October sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Based on a finding that the proposed project to raise the nonconforming existing single family structure. And construct a new one-story nonconforming single family residence. Attach it to the existing garage. And set further back on the lot to decrease the encroachment into the front setback and side setback. And eliminate the encroachment into the town of Manchester Waterworks easement. On a nonconforming lot. Is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located. Than the existing nonconforming structure. And the requirements and conditions under section twelve point five point two. Of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met. Based on the following conditions. The new single family residence shall be located as reflected on the site plan prepared by Mill River Consulting. Dated October twelfth, twenty twenty three. The existing car tent shall be removed. The new one-story single family residence will consist of two modular units, each fourteen by forty eight. And a ten by twenty foot sunroom. And a six foot by thirty six foot farmer's porch. The structure shall not exceed a height of twenty feet and will be constructed substantially in accordance with the hand drawn elevation attached to it.
Your correction to that.
One minor correction, I believe you said ten by. She's loved to build bigger.
Thank you for that correction. Do I have a second? John's second. Any discussion? Ready to vote?
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Right, but we chose that because he was recusing himself from the. Most application, have you due this tonight?
Thank you very much.
So as you know, we have ninety days to write it, and then there's a twenty day.
I know, yes, I think actually Jim is the second author. My goal is to get thrown off the sport.
Good job tonight. Shut up.
We now move to administrative matters. To review and approve minutes, I believe we have eight minutes, September minutes, I haven't had a chance to review them yet, does anybody else?
I guess I reviewed this.
Okay.
But if no one else has, my opinion really doesn't matter.
You've reviewed them, okay. Do we want to approve them?
Grammar is correct, spelling is correct, grammar is everything.
I think there may have been a misplaced question mark, but I think that wasn't the other.
They do go into detail about how you talk about that stove.
Doesn't matter, that's fine. They're fine.
So you want to make a motion to approve?
From September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. Actually, is this meeting that you ordered?
No, is that, is that the stove meeting?
Okay, all right, nevermind, motion to approve the minutes of September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, without correction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Five seconds. All in favor?
All right.
The October minutes we're going to leave on?
Sure.
Did you review those?
I mean, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, but I wasn't there, which was.
Okay.
Prompted my correction.
And then I'm wondering who was there, because. It says that he voted on some stuff, and obviously he wasn't one of the voting members, so I just, I think we need to correct him.
Okay. So October is a question about who the attendees were.
Yeah. Danny Shell, which three Anthony, it was a couple story edition. And then. Alvin Property.
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam.
Brady.
The trailers.
You're very much concerned with the fires and press.
Very concerned, and somehow all that detail didn't make it into the minutes, so my stove question did.
I don't remember that part of the conversation. I just want to make sure that by tracking it. We get a system with twenty four thousand gallons.
That is a decision.
I owe one.
Gail, so what, what do you owe?
Twenty three Old Neck Road. The stove.
And I owe one Beaver Dam Road.
And Sean owes three Anthony Lane.
That's his first decision.
No, it's his second.
Oh, his second, okay.
It's, I'm sorry, that's Sean Zan's second decision? Hasn't he been here for like four years?
For four years, but he's been here, yeah.
But as an alternate.
Yeah, he was a little slow to, on the uptake to agree to right decisions.
Got it.
We need to poke him, now you sit next to him and poke him, so he jumps and raises his hand next time.
He was poked today, that's why he's not here.
So is there anything else? We need to discuss, I did go on the site visit for the HAC. It was interesting.
A bunch of people asked me about it.
It was. So a lot, tons of people were there.
Because they're protesters, right?
Yeah, but it's only a small group went on the actual site visit.
Yeah.
But we looked at the actual, it was much more complete than the site visit we had.
Right, or, yeah.
And everything was marked, all the corners of the buildings were marked, we walked, we looked to where the drive was. They pointed, we weren't walking on ice, and they pointed out the saltwater fishery. The Sawmill Creek. And she paid attention. Yeah, apparently she's the only one that sits in for the hearing. And then she writes the decision, and then at the end, the rest of the HAC signs off on.
When is that too?
Well, the, the evidentiary hearing is starting, it's supposed to start on March fourth, twenty twenty four. And it will be in Manchester if they can get. A proper. Location. Then it will be remote, they expect the last two or three weeks, and they expect the decision come in. You know, late in twenty twenty five.
In twenty five.
That's what they expect, but you know, we never know.
Can I get, writing a ZBA decision, you sit on it for a year and.
But the, the only thing that was disheartening is when we were looking, she didn't go all the way up because she has bad knees, but. We were looking up at the lower level of the ledge, not the highest level. And we're talking about. You know, how much was coming on. No people could get down. Anything can be engineered.
Think about the children trying to.
She was very nice.
I was getting text messages that morning from all sorts of people, like. There's like, when can I go, can I go, what's happening, I was like. I, if you're not on the list, I don't think you can go, but I think you can go stand nearby. To the public road, if you want to.
They lined the boardwalk as we walked through. Yeah.
I was like, there's public.
It's like signs and stuff?
Yeah.
It was just like a.
But not, it wasn't, wasn't any stop SLB signs. Oh, they were very courteous.
Clap slowly as you want.
No, they didn't, no, they.
Not like from.
They had put up some conservation type signs at various places and, you know, but no, it was all conservation.
Rude.
No, no.
I've got two questions.
She was a little taken aback by all the people, though, it's the most she's ever had on a site.
Really? Oh, well, that's good, this was the judge, right?
Yeah.
I, an observation.
Yeah.
That. For some reason, maybe just because I have a hearing problem, but when we ask questions of our witnesses. Sometimes it's hard to hear the question. I couldn't, I couldn't hear what you said, I couldn't hear what Catherine said, I turn my hearing aids up as loud as they go. I hear John all the time, and Brian, of course, you, you can never not hear him. Think that we. It would be a good idea to, for the chair. To either state the question. This being asked, or make sure everybody understood the question. Tonight, it didn't matter. I assume that when I speak, people hear me. But I don't know that. But I usually, you know, I'm not, so that's.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, I can try and project more as well, and also like, don't hesitate to say, like, I didn't quite hear what you said, I won't be offended, I'm happy to repeat. Well, and I think you can hear probably someone else.
Well, I think if it's hard to hear in the room.
Yeah.
It makes it difficult to hear on the recording, which makes it difficult for Gail to do the minutes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So I'm happy.
So that's, it's a very, thank you, that's a very valid.
It's, it's just, you know, I'm not being nitpicking, I am being nitpicking, but. My other question is, what are these green signs that are popping up now? I saw a half a dozen of them driving around today. Does that have to do with the MBTA thing?
I believe it's the MBTA Task Force.
Are they colored green?
Green.
A on it, I think.
Yeah, and it says save. His historic.
What is, what is the one about? KPN Bay.
Don't Boston my KPN.
Yeah, what is that?
Don't Boston my.
That's the MBTA zoning.
There's a, don't rezone my home. I'm going to put one up that says, please rezone my home.
It was interesting today in the Globe, they had a fairly good discussion about Brookline.
Oh, it was incredible.
There was also, I was on Jim and Marjorie's show, I spoke on there a couple of weeks ago. I, I wasn't a guest, I was, I spent a fair amount of time talking to them because they kept asking me questions. But. The town, our town's going to have to figure out how to get by some of this stuff, because. The biggest impediment, you know, we're all saying we need more housing. Housing is a crisis, you hear about it almost. Always. But. That's the easy one to fix. And I think the forty, this, this one, the MBTA one, I read through the handout that we got a town meeting. It's well done, whoever put that together.
No, the MBTA Task Force, it was a group.
Yeah, and. Across yesterday too, and he, he indicated.
It was, it was good.
He thought it was very good.
But, you know, this. I'm, you know, I haven't been here all my life. But. If we don't figure out how to solve some of these problems locally, we're going to be between a rock and a hard place. I won't, because I'll be dead. But seriously, going down the road, if we don't figure out how to get more people to live here and pay taxes here. We built that immense school. And I think the enrollment actually is a little lower than it was when it was.
We lost eighty two students from Manchester since twenty twenty.
Yeah, and that's a serious problem. So. Anyway, I'm sorry, I don't mean to pontificate, but it really bothers me.
No, I, I think that the task force is working hard. To come up with some possible districts. And then they have to go into the compliance model to see. Um, and then they have to go into the compliance model to see what's kicked out of, is not counting. So for instance, if you were to say that your minimum lot size was going to be six thousand, like it is in general district. If that's the minimum, then if you have one house or two houses on lots less than six thousand, it doesn't count in your density. So you have to be able to look at it and say, okay, what do we have to do to count it in the den? It doesn't look at existing. It just looks at what you could build under the zoning. So it's, it's a completely different approach. That just makes it much more difficult to figure out how to comply.
Uh, we'll do it.
Yeah.
Sort of related question, sort of ways of getting things to count. Are those powderhouse properties on the affordable rules yet?
No.
Happen? No? Why? Because people need to leave only if you allow.
No.
They haven't submitted their
The owner hasn't submitted the paperwork.
And that's the owner? Is that, was it, was it North Shore CDC?
Yes.
They're delayed.
They're delayed, is my understanding.
Have they indicated why?
Why?
No. Not a high enough priority.
It is unfortunate, yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's where it submitted something to the state over a year ago.
Yeah, so that's still not
Looking for additional information. Yeah, so it's not, they're not on there yet.
A lot of work, a lot of people
Yeah. I think they're trying to
Make the last step.
Yeah, I think there are a number of people working on it. With varying degrees of success. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yes.
When is your next meeting?
The
I'm still learning.
December. You look it up.
The twentieth.
I'm supposed.
Twelve twenty, Sarah.
Thank you, Gail. December twentieth.
December twenty. Thank you very much.
Do we have anything?
Yes. We have this, this, this fat balzone from Har- Harbor Street. Which is to convert a garage into a residence on a three thousand nine hundred square foot lot. Um, there is a um, a variance for a shed at sixteen Jersey Lane that is built or partially built and a neighbor complained. Because it's in the front setback.
Oops.
And what's the other one, Gail?
Uh, there are two others. Well, they're not, the um they're not popping up into my mind at the moment. I'm sorry.
There's a swimming pool, isn't there?
That's the swimming pool on Bridge Street. Is it eighty-nine Bridge Street?
Eighty-nine Bridge Street, a swimming pool.
The, the one with the horse paddock that's right on Bridge Street and then you go to back. So that's a swimming pool. And then there's one other that's a little iffy, isn't it?
Whatever, so there's four.
There are four.
Wait, I can find it.
Do we have site visits on the sixteenth of December, which is a Saturday?
Yes. Is that a problem for people?
No, it is for some. Basketball.
Basketball dance. It, so we have eighty-nine Bridge and sixteen Jersey Lane.
Eighty, eighty-nine Bridge, sixteen Jersey Lane.
I don't see anything else from Diane, but it could be lost in my email heaven.
It's supposed to.
No, plus we've got the Harbor Street.
And there is one more.
Okay. She says there's another one. Neither of us know where. I haven't looked at December yet. But I can let you know.
And the hearing's on the twenty-second, right?
Twenty-first.
Sorry.
Twenty.
The twentieth. Twelve twenty, Wednesday, the twentieth.
Twentieth.
Right before Christmas, yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, day before I'm supposed to leave.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Thank you.